Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:05 PM on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America. And here we go, where it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is discussion and approval of the minutes from the July 9th, 2024 meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Member Adam Appleton?
Yes.
Member Ryan?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yeah.
Chair City?
Yes, motion passes. And then the next item on the agenda is the discussion and approval of the executive session minutes from our May 28th, 2024 meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please poll the committee?
Member Adam Appleton?
Yes.
Member Ryan?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. I hope you all enjoy the annual walkthroughs that we did in our buildings. We were able to start tonight at 4:30 and started our evening by touring Park Ave. Then we moved on to the Webster Middle School, gave that a tour, and then we finished our tour here at the high school and had the opportunity to see some of the construction. I hope it's evident by the shape of our buildings how much hard work has been done over the summer by our custodians and the staff here. So I just want to give them a shout out. I'm sure we're going to go into that a little bit more during our meeting, but I hope you enjoyed the opportunity to see our buildings and see how they shaped up. The first item I have for you tonight is a personnel update. As you know, it's that time of year that we are getting ready. School opens next week, so there's been a lot of movement over the summer. The first one, though, that I would like to talk about is a little bittersweet to me. We have a retirement. She's sitting in the room tonight. I've had the pleasure of working with Ms. Barris, I think it is, for 12 years now. She has chosen to retire and move on to all the dreams and hopes that she had to do and traveling and excitement. Her last day will be in October, so she's still going to be here for a while, and we will work towards finding a replacement for Ms. Barris. And we're going to be sad to see her, though, but I wish her the very best as she moves on into retirement, and she's not going to change her number, so I know how to find her. Thank you, thank you. But we'll celebrate Kathy a little further on in the year. We also have had a lot of movement with new hires. I'm happy to say that in your pocket, you have a list of positions. I was in the process of updating a little bit of that for you today. I'm happy to say that the majority of our positions have been filled. The positions that were struggling to fill, as always, are our powers and our ABAs, but I'll go over that in a little bit. Right now, I'll read the name of our new hires. At Park Avenue, we hired Sierra Yaris, a speech and language assistant, Samantha Pelazini, who is an ABA, Joanna Maldonado as an ABA, Tabitha Chauvin, ABA, Samantha Pelazini, oh, she's there twice, Natalie Grennan, para, Tori Hendra, she worked in our district before, she is back as a speech and language pathologist, Gina Marie Carajo, grade three teacher, Robert Lopiccolo, science teacher, and actually, Robert is at the high school, so I didn't move that one, I should switch that. At the Webster Middle School, we have Megan Costa, who is a school counselor, we have Anna Pingator as an ABA, Tiana Garcia as an ABA, and then at the high school, we have Mark Leonard, who is an ELL teacher, Erin Wilson, who is a BCBA, she splits her time between the middle school and the high school, Kellyanne Matarosian, she is a math teacher, Jolene Zook de Romero, she is an English teacher, Jessica Jones, she is a math teacher. The majority of our, like I said, positions are filled. We have a science teacher that was vacant, but I signed today, so we have, that position has been filled. Some of the more difficult positions that we've had a hard time filling over the years, our speech and language, last year not being able to fill speech and language assistant positions, movement with BCBA's, we have been able to fill all of those positions this year. The one position that we still continue to struggle, and it's, I don't think it's just here in Webster, I think it's everywhere, is our school psychologist. Those positions have been very difficult. We're not getting any applicants with that. So we'll continue to look for a permanent replacement, but until then, we've contract out and look for alternative sources to meet the needs of the students. And the only other teaching position that we have pending is a preschool teacher at Park Ave., and they are in the process of interviewing for that. We did have some resignations. That was Scott DeCosta, a BCBA at the middle school, high school, Stephen Lowke, a para-professional at middle, Melissa Doobie at Park Ave., Carolyn Faulkner, and Caitlin Bergeron, both ABAs at Park Ave. So those positions are still in need to be filled, we continue to look for them, but it's a challenge filling those positions. And then internally, we had a couple of transfers. We have Faith Veronis, she is transferring from a grade five special ed position to a grade one special ed position. Marie Daly is moving from the grade one special ed to grade five. And then Jennifer Bergen is transferring from kindergarten to the learning center to classroom at Park Avenue. And then on the next page, again, it shows our vacant positions, but we are in good shape and ready for the new year. I also wanted to announce another recent resignation that we have received today. I'm sad to say that Mr. Collins will be leaving us this year. He is moving off to Fall River to be a principal at the middle school there, so this will be his last week, so we wish him the best of luck as he moves on to his new role. So I will be appointing Ms. Nieves as an interim, and once we get settled into the school year, then we will begin a search for a permanent replacement for Mr. Collins. But until then, I'm confident in Ms. Nieves' ability to fill the role and do the job to get us off to a good start, so. Is there any questions about personnel?
Through the chair.
Ms. Miller?
So is there still a need for a grade seven math teacher, then?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I missed that. Yes, there is. But we have, I spoke with Jacob Murphy, who is a math academic interventionist. He is going to be moving over into the role of a seventh grade math teacher. He is certified as math. He was one of the reduction enforcers from the high school. He was certified in math when we eliminated his social studies. That was the position that was available for him to move into, and we were looking to fill the seventh grade position. I had a conversation with him this week and said, "Look, this is a position we need to fill. We haven't had luck in finding everybody, so he is going to move transition into that position." I told him we would continue to look for about a month to see if anybody would turn up, if we had another applicant, because we really would like to fill that interventionist role. There is a need for it at the middle school for that math support, but we're going to hold it for a period of time to look for a position, and then after a month, if we have no movement, we'll make it a more permanent move, because we do seem to have a little more luck filling an interventionist than we do filling a classroom position. But we don't want it to go all year without being filled. And Jacob has been a team player. He says, "I understand, that's the priority," so he is happy to move over there and help us, so, yep. Any other questions about personnel? No? Okay. So I'm going to move on to an instructional leadership update. As you know, the school district has a partnership with our statewide system of a support. They have supported us in the past with professional development, some coaching through the district. We have been informed that they are reorganizing this year, so they're structuring their systems. So they're going to be bringing us some more information sooner. I think what they're doing is they're spreading themselves a little bit, out a little bit more across the state, and the services that they provide to the schools districts are going to change. They're not going to be able to come in and do professional development anymore. Their role is going to be a little bit more supportive and hands-off, but they're having a webinar this week that I will be listening to and getting some more information on what services they're going to provide to the school system. So as soon as I find out, I will be sharing that with the committee. On Wednesday last week, August 14th, we had our DLT-ILT summit. We held that at Nichols College. There was approximately 36 of us there. It is the District Instructional Leadership Team along with the School Instructional Leadership Team. The district spoke about our instructional priority, and I did put that in the notes view. Our priority for the FY '24-'25 school year is going to be all educators will intentionally plan and implement lessons utilizing district-approved curriculum materials to provide data-informed, research-based, inclusive practices so that students, particularly ELL students and students with disabilities, will demonstrate proficiency in grade-level reading and writing standards. It is not far off from what our instructional priority was last year. We still had a focus on ELL, we had a focus on special education, but what we found is that it was so broad that it was difficult to monitor, and the whole purpose of our instructional priority is to say, "Where can you get the most bang for your buck? Where can you hit hard with your instructional priority to see growth in your students?" And working with the state, looking at our MCAS scores, looking at MCAS, looking at our heat maps, where are we struggling the most? That is in literacy, and it is reading and writing, and we know that our special populations, our L populations and our special needs are the highest struggling in that area. So we were tasked with really trying to hone in and really dig in and narrow our focus, and then how we're going to monitor that focus is we, as a team, are really going to be focusing on looking at grades three, six, and nine to really narrow that down, because it's impossible to monitor every classroom, every grade, all the time. So the work that we're doing, we're going to monitor three, six, and nine, but there's reading and writing in everything. That doesn't mean we're not doing it in the district, it's just as a leadership team, that's what we're going to be looking at to say, "Is this working? Where do we need to shift? You know, what instructional strategies are we getting out there, and how are we meeting the marks?" So that is going to be the focus of our instructional work this year. So as you know, we had really worked hard last year with our schools. We brought to the committee the separation of our school instructional leadership team from our department heads to really be able to have that focus on instruction like we're focusing on instruction at the district. So there's a throughway. We restructured our meetings, so that way, they're in alignment, so when we discuss something at the district level, the week after that, there's a school instructional leadership team meeting, they have time to work on things. Another week after that, there's another school instructional, so there'll be a throughway communication back and forth on the information that we're looking at. And Dr. Mackay really worked hard at looking at a plan for the year, what we're going to look at, what types, what subjects we're going to look at, and how that's going to work, so that when we're doing our planning, when we're saying we're focusing on student work this year, we're working with science, looking at student work, and then as a leadership team, we'll focus on three, six, and nine, but the schools will focus on their grades, their departments. So that way, we're looking for growth and improvement. So we have a lot of work to do. As you know, at our last meeting, I had mentioned that we had submitted to the state in June for feedback, and the feedback that they gave us was that they were happy with our instructional priority. It was more about clarity in roles, who's doing what, that's what we've worked on, that's what we've defined. So I feel good moving into the new year with a strong structure in place to support the instructional priority and the work that we need to do as we move through. Does anybody want to add anything here about the DLT-ILT or the instructional priority or the work that we have lined up for the year? Did I miss anything? No? Okay, all right. Do you have any questions about that? No? Okay, thank you. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mackay. She is going to talk about the SEB Academy and Summer Programming.
Good evening. Thank you for helping us celebrate the wonderful things that we've done this summer. I'll start with the summer school wrap-up. This summer, we were able to service, I think it's, I think the bulb may be off.
I don't have a remote.
Right. So this summer, 73 students at Park Avenue participated in the 21st Century Pass program from kindergarten to grade four. We had 19 students at Webster Middle School participate in traditional summer school between grades five and seven, and we also had 87 students participate in the special topics camps that we ran, really trying to engage the students. We had 20 students who participated in that eighth to ninth grade transition, so I'll be looking to develop some measures of, you know, was it effective? Did that make a difference for students transitioning in to high school? And we had 55 students who participated in the Bartlett Credit Recovery Program. So we had a really good representation of students, but also of different programs. On July 18th, the 21st Century Pass program at Park Avenue received a site visit from DESI, from the Department of Education. The visitors were Carol Resnick, who is the coordinator of 21st Century Community Learning Centers for DESI, and Donna Trainham, who is the early learning literacy team lead for DESI, as well as Rochelle Angler Bennett, who is the Associate Commissioner in the Office of Student and Family Supports. And the Associate Commissioner stated this. "Thank you for your lovely note and for welcoming us on the recent visit. We're grateful to you and your amazing team of staff, students, and families for all the exciting and evolving work you are doing with the 21st Century program in Webster. It was such a pleasure to see and hear from colleagues in other rooms, a taste of what students are experiencing, and to get to find out more about your successes and challenges through conversations. One of the many highlights for me was seeing the learning and growing of both students and plants. And here are a few pics from your beautiful garden." So we're not able to show you some of those. So this week-
We're able to send them out today.
But you saw them, you saw them. So some exciting news was shared with us yesterday, that, you know, there's a Commissioner's weekly update email, and we were featured in the Commissioner's Picture of the Week. So it was really great to see the excitement and joy in the student celebration of their work. They were so engaged, they were so proud of the produce that they had a part in creating, and it was really great that we were able to share some of that produce with families at the end of each day. Any questions about the summer program? Sounds like a great program. Impacted a lot of students this summer. It did, it really did, it really did. And we're really happy that we keep expanding, and Ms. Taylor and I were just talking about how can we expand to Webster Middle School, some of the enriching, like, project-based learning activities ongoing throughout the year at Webster Middle School. That's an area for us to consider, like, how do we grow? Where do we grow from here? That's a place where we grow from here. Great. I also wanted to introduce to you the academy that Webster was selected to participate in. It's called the SEB Academy. SEB stands for Social, Emotional, and Behavioral, and the goal of this academy is to build an MTSS system. MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred System of Support, or SEL, which is Social, Emotional Learning, which is inclusive of PBIS. This is a three-year academy for us, which will support our ability to sustain the work that we've been trying to do with PBIS for a while now that Esser is gone. So we're happy to be able to participate in this academy. It doesn't come, it's not a grant, it doesn't come with funds for anything, but it comes with the technical assistance. We will be given two coaches, one for PBIS and one for Social, Emotional Programming Development. And there are some commitments, there are some monthly meetings of a team, we have to establish a team, there are monthly meetings with our coaches, that PBIS coach and SEL coach, and then there are some convenings that, you know, some larger gatherings that DESI puts on with other schools, we get to collaborate with other schools, and sharing phone calls, our staff will be able to share with, like, like districts or, you know, other districts that are doing similar things, they'll arrange some, like, phone call sharing for us, and there's also monthly webinars, not just for the team selected, but for anybody in Webster, for any of the staff to participate in monthly webinars on topics like all social, emotional, behavior topics. For instance, one of them that they feature is how to help newcomers, how to meet the social, emotional needs of newcomers, which obviously is very interesting to me, to all of us. So anyway, we're pleased to announce that. We have some work to do, we have to create teams, we have to conduct a needs assessment, we have to set goals, and then we'll monitor our progress and determine, like, what does it look like in year one, what does year two look like, and what does year three look like? So very pleased to have that. One of the things that we noticed was that we're doing the work with PBIS, but we have kind of like a cohesive missing link, and that is the work of Social, Emotional Learning. So not all of our PBIS activities actually teach students the skills to be able to be less behavioral. And so that's our goal. We want to teach replacement skills, we want to teach skills and meet the social, emotional needs while responding to behaviors, but not just respond to behaviors. So this is a really critical combination for us, merging PBIS and SEL. Really excited about that. Any questions about that?
Sorry, through the chair.
Ms. Gregory?
For the webinars that the staff were able to attend, do they have professional development, like, opportunities, like, does it count toward their PDPs if they attend those, or certain credits they can obtain towards their licenses?
Not credits. I'd have to see if those webinars would be considered PDPs. We would certainly get that information out for our staff.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that'd be, and it would be motivating for them if they counted.
Absolutely. Great question. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Mackay.
Right. And moving on, thank you, Dr. Mackay. It's great stuff, there's a lot of good work happening, and I'm excited for the new year. And it's important that that academy, we've been so fortunate, like Dr. Mackay said, to support a lot of our PBIS work with Esser programming, the Esser funds, and now that that's going away, to find alternative sources so that we can continue that work is critical. So thank you. And then next, we have our Assistant Director of Student Support Services and Equity, Shari Here is here. She is going to, that was kind of, Shari Here is Here, how's that, huh? I'm like, as I said it, I'm like, okay, it sounded a little silly there. So she's here to talk about a couple of programs that we are starting, there's some changes that are happening, and a bright program that's starting. I was hoping to show the presentation, but it should be in your pocket, so you do have it, so they can follow along with you. But Shari, if you want to talk about the programs?
Yes, thank you. So the purpose of this, I'll be talking about the new IP-
Shari, can you pull the mic a little closer?
Sure. The IP format, two interventions that I'd like to introduce, as well as a quick overview of student support statistics. So we were not early adopters of the new IP, the state of Massachusetts has a new IP. Thank you. And I just want to share some of the takeaways of the purpose of the new IP format, is to simplify the whole IP process. The way the new IP is designed is it acts like a graphic organizer, so when team chairs chair meeting, it allows them to facilitate a very deep, engaging discussion with the family and the players on the team. It avoids positional power play, so it's evenly distributed with the family and the school district, doesn't feel so one-sided. It gives a pathway, again, to deeper engagement, and one of the key elements that's really important is student independence. So the focus of IP development is around, how do we work with students and build their skills so they could become more dependent? And of course, it's based on data. So other things that I think are important to discuss is, how does it look different? And this is so obvious, but I just kind of like to point out that the old IP format was in portrait, and the new one is in landscaping, so that's pretty obvious. So what are some of the changes? There's some content that's moved around, there's some content that's been renamed, there's also some content that's no longer included. It used to be the case with the old IP format that you would take a summary of the evaluation and you would cut and paste it into the old IP. The new format, we don't, we no longer do that. What we do is we take the findings of the evaluation and we synthesize that, and we look to determine, like, what does a student need in their IP programming to help them access the curriculum and be successful? There are, there used to be two pages dedicated to accommodations. One was primarily for accessing the general curriculum, and then the other one was for related services. Now there's four, and they're broken down by academics, behavior, communication, and other related services, so that's a change. There's also different checkboxes that you could check if it impacts your students. So if a student is diagnosed with autism, and you check the box, then the seven characteristics associated with autism will appear. So things that are needed and very specific to the students will appear, and if not, if they're not needed, they won't be there as well. There's forms that used to be separate from the IP, so you would have the IP developed, and now if a student's over 14, you have a separate form for transitioning, that's embedded. Another form that's embedded is the transfer of student rights, that's a form when a student is 18 years old and they could make educational decisions. It's not, no longer a separate form, so that's really nice as well. Another change is to the service delivery grid. It used to be extended school year services were included in just one service delivery grid. Now they have one for school year-based services, and then a separate one for extended school year. So I think it's important also to mention that we're going to be communicating this with our families, so that could happen through school newsletters, we could backpack home letters, we could also mail out letters so the family is aware of this new change. So although we were not early adopters, we are doing in advance of the mandatory date, which is November 1st. So the Power School, which is a platform that we use, specifically PSSP, Power School Special Programs, has already been rolled over to the do IP. Okay, any questions on that piece? Okay. So the next program that I'd like to introduce is Choices. We started implementing this program last year around February, and what I want to share is that this program is located in Worcester, and they have three programs. One is called Alternative Peer Group, the second is the Positive Alternative to School-Based Suspension Pass, and then there's the Recovery Education Academy. We've been primarily working with this, with the Choices program, utilizing their pass program. And what it is, is an alternative to suspension for students who have received, like, a disciplinary infraction for substance abuse-related action. So the way we've been using it is a student gets suspended, and they have a couple of different options, you have to provide them with at least two. Traditionally, with our district, we provided them with tutoring during their long-term suspension, or they could participate in Woodward Day if it's a very, very long suspension, or alternative educational setting where they would actually physically go. So this is going, this type of program allows the suspension to not count towards it as a suspension, because they're participating in educational programming. So I would like to describe PASS as having, like, a two-pronged approach. They're dealing with the substance- They're dealing with the substance abuse while also providing tutoring to help them access the content while they're not physically in school. So they're attending a program for a school, a full school day, and during that time, they receive group counseling for substance abuse concerns, as well as individual counseling. And what makes this program unique is that their mental health substance abuse counseling is billed through their insurance, so it could continue on past the suspension. So if they're suspended for five days and the intake coordinators have evaluated them and determined that they need continued support, they could continue, they have relationships with UMass counselors, psychiatrists. Some of our students, they, who have medications, for example, they may lapse, and if they lapse, then their parents have to make an appointment, it becomes, you know, very long-term situation where they could get in sooner through this, through this program. So since February of 2023, when we started using the program, 10 students have attended. And all those students, because they agreed and they fulfilled their obligation based on their disciplinary situation, don't have suspensions on their record because they chose to go to this alternative program. I just wanted to share a couple of scenarios. We had two students who were suspended for five days and agreed to go to this program for an alternative suspension, and during their five days, there was a snow day, and the principal agreed to have them come back on a Monday and, and excuse them from the one snow day, so instead of having five days, they were able to go for, for four. The students requested that they stay for the fifth day and come back on a Tuesday because they felt that they had unfinished business and they wanted that, that extra day, so we were able to accommodate them. And then there was another scenario that I wanted to share, where a student was suspended at the end of the school year, and they were able to fulfill their obligation and go the, the five days, but that parent was thrilled with their evening program, the APG, which I mentioned earlier, because it allowed him to participate in an evening peer group, so he had a place to go and maybe not spend time with some other children that may be, be influencing the, the substance abuse issue. So he, he was really thrilled with that. I could also mention before, like, you know, talking about the cost of this program, that the Alternative Peer Group is something that is available to the students that participate after the fact, or even during what it is. It happens in the evening, they have group counseling, they go out into the community, they learn different means of, of having a good time that doesn't involve, that doesn't involve drugs, and that is something that's also billed through the insurance. So any counseling or any peer group involvement is billed through the student's insurance. And should transportation be an issue to get chewed from the evening program, they will provide vouchers and transportation for the students, and some of our students have opted to go. And in fact, during like, school vacation periods, the students would go to this peer group, and they chose not to stay home, they're like, I don't want to stay home, I would prefer to go to this group, and, and they would send transportation to go. Now, when they do go as part of their alternative to suspension, we do pick up the bill for transportation, and it costs $75 per day, which, when we think about paying the, the tutoring rate of $45 an hour, this is not $90 versus 75, which they get the two hours a day for, for tutoring. So again, the PASS program is alternative for suspension, the APG is the After Hours Peer Group, and the Recovery Educational Academy, that's a high set for students that are, have substance abuse, and we haven't taken advantage of that yet, or made any referrals. Any questions on this program? Okay. So the next program that I want to speak to is called Bright. It is from the Brookline Center for Community Mental Health. It is something that we are exploring at the moment and, and looking forward to implementing the school year. So it is a tier-three approach that coordinates academic and mental health for students that are having a mental health crisis. They could be experiencing a challenge, they may have gotten back from a hospitalization. We have students that are not ready to go into the classroom, but they're ready to come to school. So we're looking to create a culture of transition where they have a softer landing. So when they come to school, they're not necessarily going back into their classrooms, there's a place where we have a dedicated teacher and a counselor that has time dedicated to, to supporting students to, to help them transition. So why does Webster Public School need it? And I wanted to give some statistics related to how many students this year alone have been on home hospital tutoring. There's been five at Park Avenue, 16 at Webster Middle School, Bartlett High School has nine students, and there has been three students that are out of district that have been on home hospital tutoring. So this could mean that they were long-term suspended, or that they were, they were hospitalized. The, the Bright intervention is in over 100, 150 programs are, are implemented currently in Massachusetts. There's 45 at the middle school. And currently on the website, one of the statistics Bright shared was that 50% of all, of all lifetime mental illness begins by the age of 14. So I thought that was an interesting statistic to share. So this is where we're at in the implementation process. We're looking to implement at Bartlett High School and Webster Middle School, and we have two different programs, two different means of the way that we're implementing. At the high school, we have a dedicated program for, for Bright, and that includes a teacher, a dedicated assistant, and also a dedicated counselor that has specific time. It isn't the full day, it's just going to be a portion of the day. For Webster Middle School, it's an interesting model because it is shared space and a shared resource, so they have a journey program that's going to be shared with, with Bright, but they do have a dedicated behavioral assistant and dedicated counseling time as, as well. The counselor again is not full-time in the, in the program. So it'll be interesting to see how the two different programs, one, run one with a shared resource and another one that's fully, fully dedicated. So we have already done like a pyramid related to our, what each building has in terms of MTSS, the Multi Tiered Systems of Support, and we have gotten to the point of creating an operations plan for each of the, each of the buildings. Now we're at the, the, the time and the process where we're customizing their program to meet our building needs. There's different models in terms of how a student is referred, what does that look like, what is the exit criteria, what does a program look like when they're actually in the program, when they exited, how do they, how do they access the program? Because this is something that is not permanent, it's not an IP-related service, it is something that is used during this, this, this challenge that they're experiencing with mental health, and then they graduate, they become alumnis, but there's a program so they can visit the team, but at, at a specific date and interval, so it's not something that they just randomly go, go to, everything's very, very structured. So I wanted to share the, the cost. They, this program costs 7,500 per school per year. They have benefactors that are looking to provide funding to help implement this type of a program. And right off the bat, they provided us with a contract for $12,000 for both schools, but the fee for the program shouldn't inhibit us and prevent us from moving forward, that they, they said that their benefactors like to see some contribution from districts, so this is just the starting point of the, of the negotiation. Should we need to provide some funding, the, the potential funding could go through the special education grants? Any questions on, actually, I do want to share one more thing before I ask if there's any questions. So what do we expect from a program like that? What could be the expected outcomes? And it's increasing in family engagement, we want to see fewer rehospitalizations of our students and higher graduation rates. We also, most importantly, want to see a decrease in substance abuse and self-harm. And where this could also save the district some money, and also importantly, have students be in what we call their least restrictive environment, is a reduction in out-of-district referrals. Because of the 30 students who had home hospital tutoring, one has been already directly placed in an out-of-district setting, two IPs were rejected as, and have requested in an out-of-district setting, and then there's a fourth one who already has an extended evaluation out of, at an, at a district setting. So having a place that we could talk to parents and families, there has to be buy-in from the families, it's not something you would do without consulting with them first, that it's important that they're on board, they understand the programming, the expectations, that there's something that the district has to offer. And that would be like my end of the description of Bright. Any questions regarding that? So next, I want to give like a general overview of the student support statistics. So there was a chart that showed how many students we have across all the categories for special education. Our highest category continues to be autism. Out of the 520 students currently eligible, we have 128 that have eligibilities of autism. So we looked at the CDC's data for autism back in two, it ran up to 2020. Back in 2000, they, they, autism was found in one out of 150 children. 2010, it was one out of 68, and fast-forwarding to 2020, it's one out of 36. So the rates have changed by, over, close to five times. So it's, so it's definitely something that we need to be mindful of, in terms of having like, having referrals for initial determinations that have autism diagnoses. In terms of referrals, this past year, we, we have seen a decline since 2022. When we had a return from COVID, there was 177 referrals, last, the year before last was 143, and then last year was 120. Early childhood referrals seem to be the, the leader of the referrals, so out of that 120, 83 were from early childhood. We also had 30 move-ins this summer. We looked at the trend for early childhood referrals, not last year, but the year before, there was 70, but the year before that, there was in the 80s as well. So it seems to be like hovering around, around 80 the last couple of, you know, between 70 to 80 the last couple of years. And then last, there's a couple, two more things that I'd like to just mention. We are, we have teamed up with TNTP, who we used for, who we use as a vendor for literacy. They did a special education program review for inclusion, and in that report, we're going to be sharing it first with our building admin in a meeting, then it's going to be shared out to our, our staff and faculty. The program review includes information about inclusion, how to improve our staffing models, and help our students make, improve in the area of making gains. Then finally, there's been some significant changes to the Title IX, and I provided like a summary of the, the changes to the regulations, but the most important thing is to just identify the implications for the school district, and it's going to change the way that we investigate cases, make determinations, and create policies. That's it, any questions?
Any questions from the committee?
Clearly lots going on.
Thank you.
Thank you for this very comprehensive overview.
Appreciate it.
Very informative.
Thank you, Shari. And as you can see, there, there is a lot of work going on, and we're really trying to focus on strengthening our tier-two and our tier-three supports, because we find that's an area that is weak, and that we really need to strengthen to support our students here in the district. All right. Moving on, under my instructional leadership update, it is hard to believe that opening day is right around the corner. We have finalized our PD grits and make sure we have everything in order, we will be sending them out hopefully tomorrow to the district. I'm excited to announce that we have a guest speaker for our conversation. I did attach a flyer in your packet. Dr. Doug Luff is from, originally from the area, he was from, he has ties to Worcester, and he also has some ties to Webster. He is an author of the book From Homeless to Harvard. He will be here speaking on Monday morning, opening day. You're welcome to come see him if you want. I believe he is going on at eight, about, it'll be probably about 8:30 in the morning, so you're welcome to come, listen to him speak. I hope he kicks us off and inspires us to approach the new year in a positive manner.
Mrs. Perangeli, where is opening day happening?
Opening day is going to be held this year at the middle school and the gymnasium. As you know, we don't have an auditorium this year, and we didn't have it at Park Ave because of parking. There's no place, we're, we're full with the staff already, there's no place for the middle school and high school to park, so we're having it here. It is not air-conditioned though, so dress comfortably if you choose to come, but it is a place where we can seat all of our staff to kick off the morning. We'll spend the entire morning in the gymnasium, and then the afternoon, they will be venturing off to their buildings to set up their classrooms for the first day of professional development. Any questions? Okay. Moving on, family and community engagement. Last week, on Tuesday, August 13th, we had a team from Webster who attended the Webster Summer Send-Off down at the lake. As you know, it's, it's also known as National Night Out across the country. All of our community partners were there, there's supports for the community there. We had our food service, we had our adult education represented, we had our schools represented, we had books, we had literacy, we had calendars, we had some fun, we had a dunk tank with some good sports, our principals and our food service director, who, who was willing to go in our dunk tank and get dunked. It was a great night, it was a fun night, it's a great way to engage in our community, to talk to people, and just make a connection before the school year comes up. So we're already talking about next year and how we can expand on that. They are looking to move it a week later for next year. So it was just a really nice night out and a great way to connect with some of our families. So I want to give a special thank you to everybody who attended, our principals, our, our food service again, our adult ed, our literacy teams, who were there to just spend a night connecting with our families. So thank you. I, I know I saw some of you there, I don't know if you all had an opportunity to attend, but it was a really great night.
I was there, I also saw someone else in the dunk tank, Mrs. Perangeli.
I might have gotten a little wet.
Perhaps.
A few times, I think my ears were waterlogged, actually.
You guys were good sports, though.
It was a lot of fun, it was a lot of fun. And other updates, Park Avenue is working on bringing in Big Brother, Big Sister Program at the school, and they are partnering with the high school, so I will, Ms. Ahutske is taking the lead on that, and I'm sure she's going to bring it to you when they are here, and they will give a more detailed report. The district has also received notification that our NEASK is going to have a two-day collaborative conference visit. They will be here on December 4th and December 5th, and then our decennial accreditation visit will be in 2026, where they'll be here for a few days. So we are preparing for that, we are getting ready, and we look forward to that. And then today, here in this room, and tomorrow, we had our new teacher orientation. It was, we had about 16, I believe, new staff here today. It was organized by our curriculum director, Debbie Rivera, and Michelle Budney. I attached, I believe in our agenda in the packet, you had a copy of what they discussed over the last, over today and tomorrow. Tomorrow afternoon, we had expanded it, I think last year was the first year that we expanded it to paraprofessionals and other new members in the district. It used to just be teachers, and we expanded that to give everybody the opportunity to learn about our district and what, and to get prepared. I think that's the biggest that comes out of it, is to come in and to know that they've had an introduction, they can log in, they know all the programs they're logging into, they can access everything, they learn about the curriculum we use, they learn about our L program, our special ed program. And I had a teacher come up to me today and say, you know, I, I did something similar to this in another school, but I have never felt so prepared as I do right now. The program that you have is much more in-depth and way better than what we've experienced before. So she, she commented, I feel ready, I feel like I'm going to be ready, and she only completed one day. She's not here tomorrow. So tomorrow, they spend the morning here again, we take them for a tour at noon, we take her drive, we have a school bus coming, and we'll take her ride around the community so they can see our Webster community, and then they go back to meet with their principals in the afternoon. So, and while the teachers are meeting with the principals, we'll be meeting with the other staff, the paraprofessionals, and the ABAs to welcome them. So it's a really great program, and I think all of the work that goes into planning that, because it is a big effort to plan all of that work. because it is a big effort to plan all of that work. Are there any questions about that, new teacher?
Who's the chair? Miss Miller? I wanted to add something since our food service director is here. I receive emails from the library, the news, and they said one of the reasons that the library has an increased population coming in was the food service program that was there this summer because it brought more people with, and children, into the library and to other programs. So I thought it was an awesome thing, and I was there that one time. But it's also not just helped feeding some of our students during the summer, but it helped them to utilize the library and increase the use of the library. So thank you for all your hard work.
Absolutely. It's great, and that's one of the things that we're really working through with all of our community partners. How can we team together to invest more in our community and to be part of our community and to participate in our community, whether it's police, fire, library, Board of Health, our senior center? The more involved that we have, the more people are learning about our school system, learning about our families, learning about our kids, and engaging them to be teammates with us, to be partners with us. So, and there's no better way to do it than through food and through, through our mails. So thank you for saying that. I appreciate that. And I did want to notify the committee of a last-minute notification that I got today. As you know, IEEE has been detected in town. It's, it's at a critical level. So I was notified today that they are spraying the town tonight after 8 o'clock. They should be done by 1:00. They emailed the school saying that they plan on doing the schools in town tomorrow or Thursday. This is going to impact our sports programs. Right now, through the month of September, we cannot practice after 6:00. And then in the month of October, it is 5:00 until there is a frost. So Mr. Pronto has some work ahead of him in adjusting schedules, in meeting with coaches, making sure we're adjusting practices, that we're not going beyond the 6:00. No more night games, unfortunately, which means rescheduling many things. And not only our community, but what other communities is this impacting? So, you know, if we're driving out to another community that doesn't have it, it could, we could potentially have a night game, but if there is another community, then they're in the same boat as us, is how do we schedule those games and get them done by 5:00 on a certain day? What does that look like for us? So it's, it's going to take some time. It's going to take some coordination. We just received the notification this week, so it's a work in progress. But I know Mr. Pronto is all over it. So, thank you for that. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. It's a throwback, but on a Tuesday, you're going to be wearing the business manager hat again this evening?
I am.
The next item on the agenda is the business manager report, so good evening once again.
Thank you. I will try and get through this, but as you've walked around the buildings tonight, you can see there is a lot going on in our buildings. And I wish Ms. Kontos was here tonight because all of this work takes so much coordination and so much effort. This stuff doesn't just happen. This stuff takes planning, takes bids, takes procurement, takes time and writing, follow-through, and then throw in $101 million construction project on top of that. She deserves a huge shout-out. In all of my years, I have never had to do that much at one time. It's usually spaced out over a period of time. And the amount of projects that we have done this summer is really unheard of. So kudos to Ms. Kontos for all of that work. And kudos to the teams who are involved in all of that work because she's coordinating, she's organizing. But there on the ground floors are custodians, our IT staff, who are there adjusting, moving, planning, and really trying to not only manage the projects that are going on, but get everything else ready. Make sure all of our Chromebooks are cleaned and stuff. Make sure our floors are clean. Make sure our buildings are maintained, our desks. Everything gets pulled out of classrooms. Everything gets put back in classrooms. So there is a lot of work that goes on, and, and we don't have huge staffs. We have small staffs. So those guys are working really hard. So I just think they all deserve, if you see them, please thank them because we can't thank them enough for their efforts of what it takes to maintain and keep up with these buildings. So I will run through her report real quick. The following activities, so under building committee, we had a building committee meeting last night. Things that are in progress in the basement, there's excavation and installation for the underslab drainage. There's underground plumbing going in. There's rough plumbing and layout. In backfill, there's prep for the locker room slab. On the first floor, you've seen tonight, there's a lot of installation of ductwork and rough plumbing in the gymnasium. They are framing the outdoor classroom. That was nice to actually see what that's going to look like. You visualize it in a picture, but to actually go through and see some framing up to see how big that space is going to be and what it's going to look like, that was really exciting today. They are working on the roof drains. They are also doing the underslab and plumbing and electrical and underground plumbing on the first floor. On the second floor, you see ductwork going up, conduits and metal frame and drywall. So they are starting, they've done ripping down a lot in that section. Now they're starting to build back and put it together. On the roof, they are installing some roof blockage insulation on the gym and lower roof and the protection boards in the auditorium. The site work is currently in progress to run the conduit from the new internet fiber and coax cable that supports our cable TV. You saw our new egress that was put in over here in Section A. That was put in in advance for Phase Two. We have a short window of time when we're switching from Phase One to Phase Two. So this work was able to be done over the summer when the students were not here. So that is a section. We have color selections. We've selected colors in cafeteria tables and chairs, classroom lecterns and bleachers and gyms. We have chairs that are being delivered here for our cafeteria on Monday. So if you want to test out what a chair is going to look like, you can come on in on Monday. They're going to be here for a little time so we can give them a test run and see what we want. And then our team is preparing the technology procurement specifications to go out to bid. So they've worked on, the architects have worked on that. They're sharing it with our IT team and Lisa. They're reviewing it, giving feedback, and we'll go out to bid for that because we need IT for Phase One. We're going to be going in, so we need service, we need equipment to get into those zones. So there is a lot going on with the building project. It's very active, but it's really exciting to now start to see it ramp up and get kicked up to the next level and see what it's going to look like. As far as maintenance goes across the district, our custodian teams in all three schools have been working really, really hard on deep cleaning, classroom moves, and our normal routine summer maintenance and prep for the upcoming year. We are very grateful for their commitment and dedication in ensuring that our district has a clean learning environment and keeping the appearance and function of our facilities and grounds in top shape. They take a lot of pride, and they work really hard at maintaining our buildings. At the middle school, there's also a lot going on at that school as far as maintenance and upkeep. You saw the back of the building was paved. That is used as our driveway for our drop-off and pickup. The town had came in and paved that for us. That was money that we got at town meeting. So I want to thank the DPW for always supporting us, coming out and doing that work. It saves a lot of money for the town by having the DPW do that and the labor in that, so we really appreciate that. We also noticed tonight during our walkthrough that our window glass replacement, we have about 200 windows that are being replaced, that where the seals had broken the windows, they're cloudy, they're difficult to see. They've started that work. They're, I think, about halfway done, they said. And the majority of the work will be done for the side of school. And then any remaining work will be scheduled so that we're not disrupting our school day with our students. That project is also being funded through a town meeting appropriation and a grant that we received from the state. So we look forward to that. Also, at the middle school, we are updated. You heard Ms. Dornice explain how we've updated all the HVAC controllers. Every UNIVENT in every classroom is being touched. New network cards are being installed. Wiring is being done to support that. So the end goal is to have an updated system that he doesn't have to go on the roof to change, to change temperatures and the way the building runs. He will be able to do all of that from his computer, and it'll certainly help with the updates and maintaining that. In the gymnasium, the new volleyball sleeves have been installed. As you know, we're using the gym for our volleyball season coming up. The basketball hoops were inspected. New O-rings are needed, and the installation is being scheduled. The basketball hoop motor is leaking oil, and the seal will be replaced. We also had a replacement scoreboard that was ordered several months ago, and I believe it was delivered, right? I think it was, yeah, I think, yeah. Right. So it was delivered, and it'll be installed. We're excited about that. The other one hasn't worked for a while, so we're ready for that. And also, we just discovered recently that the power supply for the motor that controls the bleachers has malfunctioned, so we need to replace the switch. So you fix one thing, another thing breaks. You know how that goes. But that's how you maintain a home, right? That's what you do. And they are doing a great job maintaining that. At the middle school, we also have our HVAC mixing station. Is that at the middle school? No, that's at Park Ave. So at Park Ave, our mixing station, HVAC, the valve on that has become corroded and it's had, which can lead to a reduced performance in our HVAC system. So we're making sure that is going to get fixed and repaired. Our kitchen freezer, the motor began to fail, but luckily, the guys noticed it. We have inspections in place. We have walkthroughs where the guys come in. They monitor on weekends. They do building checks. So they were able to catch that early, so there was no impact to our freezer inventory, and that will be repaired. The gymnasium at Park Ave, you noticed, was going under a deep cleaning over there. They're repainting the lines in the gymnasium. So they're taking care of that. They're also working on divider net on the left side that's not folding correctly. They're fixing that, and they're purchasing some replacement parts, and they have that scheduled for repair. And then you noticed when we walked through the library and the center, that's been cleaned out and the library books are taken. We are putting in sub-partitions in the library. That work is done in, will be done in early to mid-September. We got confirmation that they'll be delivered, I think, on September 2nd around then. We are using grant funding, and that will give us a little more space to have some space for pullout services and some small group services for some of our students. Are there any questions on maintenance as we go on? No. Okay. Our FY '24 year-end update. So we are closed out our FY '24 budget for the year. We've either paid or encumbered all of our pending invoices. If they are not paid or encumbered, and we receive an invoice after the fact, we have to go to town meeting. You see that from the town. It's common practice. So we try to make sure we methodically go through everything that we have and utilize our purchase orders to make sure that we have everything encumbered. So that has been done. Ms. Kontos has done all her line transfers for the year. So you should have that copy of that budget in your packet. As you know, we had closed down the budget very early this year in January, February with the increased special ed costs that we were seeing in the ADA district tuition. We had applied for extraordinary circuit breaker relief, which we did receive. And we also received $550,000 for special ed transportation that we were able to utilize. So I'm happy to say that because of those monies that we received, we are able to return $220,327,59 cents from the managing, from putting that freeze on. So the town is always very generous in giving us money, so we feel that it's appropriate that when we don't need the money, it goes back to the town because it eventually goes to free cash. If there are maintenance items or things that need, it goes to capital, and we go through the process of looking for that. So I want to thank everybody who helped to support the budget, and it was difficult when you're putting on a budget freeze and you're looking at your budgets closely. But we also were very unfortunate that we had ESAR funds that really helped us through that time where we could offset as much as we could so that we did have savings in our budget that we could give back to the town when needed. So the budget is in there. It is, we are now in the process of doing our end-year report. That is always due by the end of September. So Ms. Kontos will be working on that, and we will bring that to you after it's been submitted to the state. Any questions on financials? No. Okay. I'm going to keep going. I'm plugging away. We are getting ready for our transportation for our FY '24, '25. We submit our list into AA. They do their magic. They give us back, they assign students to buses. We post our buses, bus routes on the website. They should be there. And then we are also giving out bus passes to our students, so there's no question of what bus they're on. Sometimes we have kids try to sneak on the bus, so they get a free ride home, and they don't have to walk. But as you know, all Park Ave students are bused. They are eligible for buses. And then middle and high school, grades five through 12, it's a mile and a half. You need to live more than a mile and a half away from the school to be bused. So all of those students will be given bus passes to make sure that we don't have any crowding issues, and we will monitor that closely. It's always hard to tell the first week of school because you have many parents who drive their kids to school. It's really hard to get accurate numbers. But once we get going through the school year, we take a real look at the status of our buses. So we are on top of that. We also had a kickoff meeting with our crossing guards here on October, August 16th to provide our refresher training and to outline the expectations of the role. We have had very stable crossing guards for a lot of years here in Webster, and I'm really happy about that. They know the routines. They know what the expectations are, but it's always good just to catch up and talk about what they need and anything that we can do to support them. And then we have our multi-function activity buses this year. As you know, we've gotten those in the spring. We have worked on procedures for the uses of the buses. They're being finalized. A training session is being planned for our volunteer drivers on September 6th because you do have to go through a training in order to be driving because you're going to be driving students on the bus. AA is partnering with us to provide that training, and I want to thank Linda Perno and Ron Ernwin for their continued support of the district and their willingness to provide the staff, the report, their support for training. I will move right along to technology. We have student Chromebooks. As you know, we are a one-to-one district. As we go through every year, student Chromebooks follow the students as they advance into the next grades, except for grades one, five, and nine. They all get new Chromebooks coming in, and then they follow them through, up to the next level. These laptops have been set up, assigned, they're asset-tagged, and they're divided in the groups for grades one and five. Our grade nine Chromebooks were deployed at our ninth grade orientation, which was held on August, August 13th. Pre-K and K devices are refreshed every four to five years and are being replaced this year. These devices have also been prepared for deployment and are in classrooms. And then when students in grades six, seven, and eight turn in their Chromebook at the end of the year, to be repaired if there's any damages, and students in grades 10, 11, and 12 keep their laptops over the summer. We are also in a refresh cycle for our faculty and admin laptops. We are also in a refresh cycle for faculty and admin laptops. The district has a four-year refresh cycle for laptops. Approximately a quarter of the faculty and administration laptops will be replaced, and the deployment is planned for when teachers return to school on August 26th. Also in technology, we have our smart boards. We talked about that tonight. They are scheduled to be installed at Park Ave. Park Ave used to have the overhead projectors. Believe it or not, that building, our newest building, is already nine years old. So they are due to be replaced. Bulbs are expensive, they're outdated. Those smart boards will be installed on August 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. Administration and technology staff received a basic training on Friday, August 16th. They also invited some teachers, they opened it up, and they have a couple of smart boards there available. So if teachers want to go in and play with them and see what they look like and get to touch them, they are welcome to do that. A more robust training is being planned that will include alternatives for providing media and advanced training. And I want to thank Jess Ahudsky and Keith Bootier for taking the time. They are creating some training clips, bite-sized clips for staff, so if they need quick how-tos, they can go to these videos, and it'll be there to support our staff. And then one of the last things under technology is our infrastructure update. So the district uses a software called Casaya. This software, this software enables the district to manage, secure, back up, and automate our technology endpoints, which means our Chromebooks, laptops, and servers. This was recently upgraded, which advances our cybersecurity position and provides more visibility to the health team, healthcare of our technology system. So as you know, you see risk everywhere. You see it on the TV all the time, that something's getting hacked, there's cyber leaks everywhere. So we are looking at strengthening our systems internally, making sure that we are keeping up with cybersecurity on our systems. So that is a good thing for Webster. Our UPS batteries, the batteries in our UPS student units that support the servers and network infrastructures have been replaced. Our Power School system, which is our main student information system, has moved to a single sign-on with our G Suite, so that is a nice, makes it one less password you have to reset every so many days. So that's a good thing. And we also have our Windows File Share Service have been upgraded from 2003 to 2019, and this will also help to increase our network servers and security and stability. Phew, that's a lot. There is a lot going on. It's been a very busy summer, but we are there, we're gonna be ready for the school year. All of this is to just make the functionality and the day-to-day easier for the staff in our building, safer and easier. So I just want to thank the team, Lisa and her team, for all of their hard work.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
And to Ms. Kontos and the whole team.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
It was a lot, I'm sorry.
It was a lot, but we delivered it efficiently. All right. Well, the next item on the agenda, if there's no questions from the committee, is the principal report. Good evening, Mr. Collins.
Good evening. I will start, it's a very short report, as it is back to school, but I want to let you know the highlights of an amazing preparation for welcoming the students in just a week, little over a week. The class of 2028's barbecue and historical orientation done through the barbecue style happened last week, and as Superintendent Prangeli said, the students did get to check out their Chromebooks. But the exciting part was that there were more students this past year than the previous years, with over 30 families, almost up to 40 families, which was really, really nice to see. And we got to engage with the class of 2028, review with their parents in a question-and-answer session, so that parents had a platform to be able to speak to school administration on their worries about that transition to high school and what that would look like for their, for their young folk coming into high school. It was a wonderful opportunity to let the kids see our student leaders and do a tour. And of course, you got to see the tour this evening, and they even, they didn't get to go inside, they got to go around. And so the reactions and the excitement was really neat to hear from the young people coming in the class of 2028. The master schedule for 2024, I have to say, what a great team that Ms. Nieves has created. You have heard the work of the PLTW program that Ms. Bigelow has created over the years. She is one of the schedulers on the scheduling team, along with Mr. Carney. So students are being looked at one by one to really hone in on exactly what, when they registered for, but what they really, really need. And then we are cross-referencing the data and partnered with our middle school stakeholders in looking at student data for the rising class of 2028. And then, of course, the ongoing and extremely important work of SPED and MLLs. So that, that team, I can't say publicly enough how great they are. Their, their approach, it's different. I've been a master scheduler for many, many years, and everyone has to have their own approach, and it's so neat to watch them. They are very oriented, and there are sheets everywhere, and there are files and things for every student, and it's neat to watch how they do it. And so I need, you know, stakeholders to understand that every kid has been eyed by several stakeholders within the building, and it's really nice, because in doing a continuation of our bell schedule around the block system, which we did see gains from, it was important to our teacher stakeholders for their voice to be heard. And so this team is balancing that voice, what students really need, and then the fact that we're a small school. And because we're a small school, there are less people to offer every single thing, but we are really trying that for the best of kids. So I can't say enough about that team. So if you see them, you should say thank you, because they are pretty great. And so I want them to know that I feel that way, too. Homecoming 2024 has been in the works, planning for about a month, I would say. Our new stew co-director is Ms. Stowicki, also known as Coach Stowicki. So she works in our special ed program, but also is our head softball coach and now our co-head volleyball coach. So she has jumped right into the social events of Bartlett, and she, for about a month, has been planning and working with student council student leaders on what homecoming would look like. So that you're aware, it's October 7th through the 12th, the dance is gonna be on the 12th. That will culminate the week. And then, of course, Friday night against Proudie for the big game. And as you know, in the schoolhouse, the kids will come back, and then they'll plan all the days, Monday through Friday. So we don't have any updates on what that will look like. Of course, they'll have their spirit days and whatever TikTok trends are out there, I'm sure, to what theme day should look like. So I encourage you to stay tuned for the greatness that the children will bring about. And lastly, the first days back to school, as we have done, and it has worked, students will spend three days in a one-on-one advisory situation with their homeroom advisory teacher that will allow them to connect outside of an idea around HQIM materials and lesson plans and things like that, just simply connecting with, you know, their first face with an adult, so will hopefully become their trusted adult. And that advisory will continue throughout the school year, and those dates have already been planned, where they will interface with those teachers throughout the school year to come. And then the students in the first days back will join grade-level assemblies, as we have done historically as well, that will allow them to set the tone with these kiddos, understanding the handbooks and things that they had previously just went over in the previous three days with their advisor. So those are the four big, heavy hitters for summer going into that. And I'll end my report with a thank you and a bittersweet statement of, I am so appreciative of the time that I got to work on the, the school turnaround work for the betterment of our kids here, and I am better for it, and I thank you all for your support. And it is definitely a hard decision that I had to make, and I, I am thankful. I am thankful for my opportunity here, and I just say thank you publicly as well, and I wish the students and staff great luck as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I, too, would like to thank you for the work that you've done in the district and at Bartlett High School, whether it be block scheduling or some of the other changes that you've brought about in the course of your work here. You've certainly made an impact. You'll be missed.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you for putting our students first. You know, the last couple of years, there's been a lot of work done with our schedule, instructionally, so all of your efforts is greatly appreciated. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Well, once again, Mr. Collins, thank you for your updates and for your contributions. The next item on the agenda under Old Business is a monthly fundraising update. As a reminder, it's a role of the school committee to review fundraising activities, but we don't approve them. Those are approved at the building level. I think there's a couple of things that are happening in there. Ms. Prangeli, is there anything you wanted to talk about, or?
Nope, just a couple of PBIS events that they're trying to do at the middle school. It's all middle school activities, and it's focused around PBIS.
Okay. Great. Any questions or comments from the committee about the fundraising activities? Okay. The next item on the agenda under Old Business is the discussion and approval of athletics handbook updates.
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Pronto.
Good evening. The handbook really didn't change too much from, from last year. We just had to put a little bit of language in through state regulations. We took out the COVID material that we were advised we could start taking that out slowly. So if there's any questions about the athletic handbook, like I said, nothing really has changed dramatically, except for the block scheduling with academic eligibility. So talking with the state of Massachusetts, the MIAA, we, the language we put in there, so it wasn't so blurry, I guess. It basically states that you need to pass 50% of your, your subjects. And with the block scheduling, they accepted that, and that's through MIAA policy, through the state requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Pronto.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the athletics handbook as it's been presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Pronto.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda under New Business is approval of surplus items. It looks like we have 228 Ready Math books from Webster Middle School and 577 ELL readers books, basically, from Webster Middle School as well. Any discussion around that? This program's no longer in use, and the books are no longer needed?
Yep, no, the additional surplus from the middle school is we've got the new curriculum now, the Arika Math, and the L readers are outdated materials. They were last used prior to 2016, so this is, we're cleaning house.
Time to go. Any discussion around that? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to declare surplus items of Ready Math and ELL readers books from Webster Middle School, and direct the superintendent or the business manager to auction off, donate, or otherwise recycle or dispose of these materials in conjunction with the provisions of Mass. General Law 30B.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Member Adamopoulos?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Millitt?
Yes.
Cho Suvi.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a donation in the amount of $1,000 from Burger King in Webster to the athletics department.
Yep. Mr. Pronto attended an event. Do you want to speak to the event? Go ahead.
So we are very appreciative of Webster Burger King. They did their renovations, and they decided that they were gonna do a donation to us. It was a great event. We had a, we had probably about 20 of our student athletes there, mostly our football players. They gave them free garb, the free food, so they liked those, those things. We had a busy day. We actually had our Hall of Fame golf tournament that day, so I was in and out. Coach L was there with Coach Janis, with his players, and a few of the volleyball girls came, a couple cheerleaders. But they were, they were, it was outstanding. We were there for maybe about an hour, hour and a half, and it was a great, it was a great time to receive money, but I think the kids really enjoyed it, though, too. They had a lot of events going on, there was a DJ there, they had the Bean Bag, TOS going, they had a lot of different events for them. I think the community obviously enjoyed it, though, too. They were all there, because they were giving free things out for everybody in the community. So it was great to get together with them and have athletics be reciprocated for that thing. So it was very good. I thank you.
Great. So in addition to all of that, they gave us $1,000 for the athletics program?
They gave us that big check, the big wooden check you see, like, on the game shows. And I believe they, they passed the check, and we have to look, check them with Christina, but I think the check actually did come in, too, so it was put into our AA account specified for athletics.
Great.
Yeah, it was really nice. It was, I popped down there that morning after attending another car wash for our student class that was doing a car wash down the road. So I went and got a car wash, and then went to Burger King for the event. Nothing better to do on a Saturday. But it was great. They had a large turnout, there were kids there, and I spoke with the manager of Burger King and just really thanked her for her partnership and working and thinking of the school department really supporting us. So hopefully, we connect on other events, because I did plug that. I said, we're always looking for community partners and way to support one another. So, you know, hopefully, down the road, we, you know, we can partner up with more events. But a big shout-out and a big thank you to them for supporting our schools.
That's great. Sounds like a good event. Any other discussion about this? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept this donation in the amount of $1,000 from Webster Burger King.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Member Adamopoulos?
Yes.
Member Stowicki?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Millitt? Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. And yeah, once again, just thank you to Webster Burger King for their generosity. Much appreciated. I'm sure Mr. Pronto will put that money to good use, too. The next item on the agenda is the approval and discussion of the wellness committee policy.
Thank you. Ms. Kelsey Sanders is here, Food Service Director, who oversees the policy, is here to present.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pull it nice and close.
All right. That should be good. So I was really excited this year. Just to give a little backstory before I explain the program that we took part in and benefited from greatly this year, the wellness policy had not been updated since 2019 due to many uncontrollable factors. We are required by the state to update every three years to make sure we have a working wellness policy that reflects the action in our community, but also meets the required regulations of the state. We were due to update in 2022, but COVID happened. Ms. Ellen Nylin left the district, and I took over, so a few factors affected updating the policy itself. DESI, in partnership with the John Stocker Institute and the Switch Wellness Incentive of Massachusetts, offered a coaching program this school year, and we, as a wellness committee, applied and were accepted. And I think it was a phenomenal program that any district could definitely benefit from. We were given, excuse me, sorry, we were given a coach, Ms. Allison Dowak, and she is a DESI consultant herself. She is well-versed in school wellness policies, regulations, what works at a specific district level. And I also want to thank, we were able to re-establish the wellness committee itself this school year, and that is members of the community who have general interest in the wellness of our students, our teachers. This is a district-wide wellness program for everyone involved, and they gave their time to join the committee and take part in this. This year, with the well overdue revamp, was a very heavy workload for all of us. So thank you to everyone who joined the committee. I will also put a plug in there that everyone and anyone is welcome to join the wellness committee, anyone down to even students, parents, community members. The feedback and contributions is so, so important to what went into this document. The first draft of this new wellness policy was passed along to Allison, the coach. I believe we gave it to her about April, and then she sent it back again for a few last-minute edits. It was then sent to DESI representative themselves, and they fine-tuned it for us. And we were given this final product, being nursing staff, especially Nurse Phillips. It was then sent to DESI representative themselves, and they fine-tuned it for us. And we were given this final product, being nursing staff, especially Nurse Phillips and Nurse Peppin. And all, you know, the core wellness team really worked hard to make sure we got down to the nitty-gritty. Of course, we wanted to be compliant, but we also wanted it to represent our specific district and what is actively happening. The best thing that was done here was we took part in an online tool called the WellSat program that walked us through every single subsection you'll see in here and addressed whether it is in our written policy or not. A lot of the things we've recognized we were doing actively in the district, but they weren't necessarily documented into our written policy. So we're very happy with this end product. We got the DESI thumbs up that it meets their requirements. And this school year, the goal with the Wellness Committee is going to be analyzing if our written policy is, in fact, in action as well and making sure we're making the connection from paper to the schools and the school community. So the headings, I'll end with this in case there's any questions, for each section are also listed in the order. They are listed on this WellSat tool. So in three years, when we have to renew again, it will be a really helpful tool to be able to go subsection by subsection. And we did get the mark of approval, but I wanted to see whether there are any questions about the specific document.
It looks very comprehensive.
Perfect.
So it looks very well done on this end. Any other members have any comments or questions about the document?
They did. We all worked really hard on it, and, you know, the people who dedicated their time. We're hoping the committee can just keep growing. We're definitely open to feedback from teachers and support staff who might want certain things represented for themselves as well. The Wellness Committee is required to meet four times a year, which we did accomplish this year. The meeting notes are required to be posted on our website, which you can find on the Food Service page. And anyone is welcome to also just attend the meetings. For all intent and purposes, they were on Zoom this year, but we are really trying to work to that in-person, personal approach for next year.
Great. That looks great. Thank you very much to you and to the whole team.
Thank you. And I will be back in the next few school committee meetings to give that final report for the summer program that went so well this summer. So thank you.
Looking forward to it. I know it's a busy summer for you, isn't it?
Oh, yes.
Great. Well, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Wellness Committee policy.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Member Adamopoulos?
Yes.
Member Starripe?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Millith?
Yes.
Trusidiki?
Yes. Motion passes. Once again, thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you, Kelsey. Nice work.
The next item on the agenda is the discussion and approval of three ABA positions at Webster Middle School.
Thank you. So after analyzing our ABA and IA needs across the district, across all the buildings, we have come to the conclusion that three additional ABA staff are needed at Webster Middle School. The request is based on Park Avenue Elementary School having end-of-the-year IEP meetings ranging from the end of March through June that were post the finalization of the budget that led to staffing changes that were on students' grids. About seven or eight students were impacted, and Park Avenue absorbed the positions that should have transferred to Webster Middle School, and they needed those because they weren't able to take into account that the budget had finalized, and then these new positions were needed. So that is why Webster Middle School is in need, because seven students transferred from fourth grade to fifth grade that had ABA either one-to-one or group support, and Park Avenue was unable to share those resources. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Mrs. Prangeli, did you want to add something?
Just that those positions would be funded through the Special Education Grant as we move in. That'll be written shortly, anytime.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve three additional ABA positions at Webster Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Member Adamopoulos?
Yes.
Member Starripe?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Millith?
Yes.
Trusidiki?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Member Adamopoulos?
Yes.
Starripe?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Millith?
Yes.
Yes. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.